Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the ninth town of Lantex Town Board meeting. A special time at 5:30. Would everybody please stand for their question?
...to define the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with every being and every creature.
Thank you. I think we make a motion for the approval of prior minutes for our February 2nd regular Town Board meeting. May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Abide? Any opposed? So move. Couple of announcements. Your county and town taxes are due to our tax collector by February 2018 without penalty. After that time, we'll step up some penalty. Also, all property tax exemptions, we have a budget, we have STAR, we have Vets, we have ADD, we have Senior Citizens, we have Non-for-Profit, are due in the Assessor's office by March 1st. Does anybody else have any? Okay. We're going slightly out of order tonight because we have a presentation from the Open Space and Affordable Housing. We're starting the process of hopefully a local law to enact our proposed affordable housing law. This is just the first step to being introduced to the Town Board. So I know that Jonathan Mentions joined us up here. He's the co-chair of the committee along with Chris Lipscomb. The whole committee is pretty much here, so I want to thank you all for all of your hard work and research and moving us towards something that I hope we can implement soon. Jonathan, are you going to take us through this? Or how do you want to handle it?
Well, I think everybody has the handout, and it's a one-page summary of the proposed local law. Behind it, Jonathan and I will try to do a chalk-and- sketch show. Let's go down the executive summary. This will repeal the existing provision which never took effect for the building of houses. And the law provides to developers only. And a developer is a person who proposes to build 10 or more houses or apartments on a single or adjacent lot. The board can decide whether it wants to lessen the number of units to something less than 10, but at least the way it's proposed would only apply to developers with 10 or more units. And the program is one to furnish housing for a person whose income is below 110% of area median income, but as we see, if we get into the levels are less. Jonathan, maybe you want to explain what an affordable rental apartment is?
Yeah, basically, the idea is the same. The way the definition works for a unit to be affordable is that it shouldn't require more than 30% of a person's income that lives in it to go for his housing costs. The way that we have a four-cell unit set up, that's calculated at 100% of area median income, so somebody earning 100% of... If someone are earning exactly the median...
What is the area median income? Is it for Dutchess County or Ryanback within Dutchess County?
It's for Dutchess County.
And what is it right now?
It depends on the household size.
A family of fours, though?
A family of fours, I believe, seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah, the high 60s.
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't gotten the latest in the updating, but that's about it. And it changes here. And it changes, yeah, changes here, although it hasn't been updated.
So if a family of four is earning 110% of that, so say around $76,000, $77,000, they would qualify for a rental?
They would qualify for a... The rental is only, is it even lower? It's 80%.
I'm sorry, this is for the sale?
Yeah, this is for the sale.
And the 30%, I always thought that rent was calculated at a quarter of your...
Yeah, the Dutchess County, what we're getting from Dutchess County, 30%. And that's all, that's the cost of basically your apartment or your house.
Why is the price for affordable housing rental units at 80% of the A and M?
Why is it at 80%?
Why is it lower? Do you have why?
Because we were trying to target a slightly lower income level for rental units, just the nature of the units, anything else that's in our system.
So going down to the districts. In Village Gateway District and Senior Housing District, a developer there must build 10% of the units must be affordable. In other districts, the developer has a choice of either building 10% of the units as affordable or paying a fee in lieu of the 25 cents a square foot for market rate units. For developers of multifamily dwelling units, the existing law limits the units to more than six in one building, one which must be affordable. That's existing law outside of this proposed law. If less than six apartments are built, the developer has a choice of making one apartment affordable or paying 25 cents a square foot for apartments that are not affordable.
So you just might want to explain that when you say paying 25, that's in lieu of the...
Yes, it's in lieu of the, and then we'll see later on what happens to that fee.
So, I'm sorry, the 25 cents would be the aggregate of all the units? So say somebody was putting up 10 houses and the houses were 2,000 square foot each, they would be paying 25 cents for 20,000 square feet?
Yes. Yes, assuming that's in a district other than Village Gateway or Senior Housing. We also have a provision which is in our model law which never was implemented about the density bonuses. Jonathan, you want to...
Yeah, and that's if, there's a density bonus of up to 15% if a developer either constructs an affordable housing unit or pays a fee at a non-stress level. And that's only available for developments of ten or more units.
No plate. And in bringing the tape over, the audio is in the basement. Look at the audio.
But then there's also fees associated with that. So it's about on the square foot for...
I don't know who left this fucking camera like this.
Both affordable rental apartments and affordable houses for sale, their exteriors must be identical, practically identical. The appearance of the market rate units, but the interiors may be different. For affordable houses and apartment buildings, they must have the same number of and size of bedrooms as the average of the market rate units. With respect to the construction of the developer, there'll be deed restrictions saying that the affordable units will remain affordable in perpetuity. And if the, say, owner of an affordable housing unit wishes to sell, the sale price is limited to what the person paid plus CPI increases or decreases plus the depreciated permanent improvements made by the owner plus the selling agent's fee. If the owner of an affordable housing unit is unable to come up with a hire or a designated who the town retains can't come up with a buyer within 180 days, the owner can remove the unit from the affordable provisions by paying the affordable housing fee that would be due if it were then constructed, so that the owner isn't locked in permanently and unable to sell.
Yeah, and the next one, there's a, basically a point system for applicants to leave for those housing units. And so we've, I mean, it's actually on page 13 of the law. And it's, basically, it's a sort of a sliding scale. The highest number of points, which is 10 points, the category of one that goes to members of Ryanback Police Department or the active volunteer fire persons or rescue squad or other emergency services personnel in Town of Ryanback or the Village. The next category is the employees in the town or village or the Ryanback Central School District, employees in Northern Dutchess Hospital, volunteers who have been employed into the Town, by the Town of Ryanback or Village Board to a Town or Village Board Committee and serve in such board or committee for minimum of six months. Then it goes down from there. It goes to farm employees, healthcare workers, employee in nursing homes of the Town of Ryanback, and then it's a resident of the town, employees of businesses in Town or Village, resident of Dutchess County, and then single parents. So we're trying to identify different categories of people, so that when a unit is constructed, the manager is going to have a vehicle through which to identify, you know, assuming if there's nothing on the map again, that would determine who ends up... Assuming that the income requirement is a given in this. So that's number one. So if you don't get the income threshold, it's not an issue. But if more than one person qualifies at the housing income level, then this is the...
Yeah, this is, we've been looking at the same...
Yeah, exactly.
And there's nothing new.
Nothing new, yeah, yeah.
And you don't get points for being two categories, just kind of nice.
No, we get votes for both.
Okay, so if you're an employee of the town and a resident of the town?
Yes.
You're the two together.
And if you're a volunteer fire person and a resident of the town, anyway.
Why do you know something like that?
The proposed law provides for planning board review of projects. And the planning board will ask for advice from the Open Space and Affordable Housing Committee. That advice must be given within 30 days in the form of a written recommendation for approval, disapproval. And if the advice is not received within 30 days, the planning board can go ahead and make its decision. The fees that are obtained, they go into a separate bank account, which can only be used in connection with affordable housing.
Will it be melded with the funds that we already have?
Yes.
So it's in a trust at the time already, huh?
Well, it's in our trust and agency.
You want a separate bank account?
I think we've been advised by Warren.
Should that be something that we do now anyway?
You mean with our...
We have existing money.
Yeah, well, a challenge in it, a trust and agency?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can make sure the local law is passed and transferred once again.
Right, hopefully this law...
A little bit more than $4,000, a little bit more than $4,000.
Yeah, but hopefully this law will be passed soon, so we don't have to do another... Let me quickly take you through the law itself, the provisions, which is on the one page. Connection with the, on page one, the purpose and intent. It's to, the town recognizes that individuals with low and moderate income should have opportunities to find housing that's affordable to them within the town. Page two, we talk about the comprehensive plan, which recognizes that the availability of the first housing choice is critical to the economic vitality of the town. Looking at the definitions on page two, the program is to provide housing for a person whose income is below 110% of area median income. But as I said, the specific provisions now are lower, but they can be adjusted by Town Board by resolution after a hearing. Affordable housing rental unit is one that does not cost a household having an income of no more than 80% of area median income, more than 30% of the annual gross income. On page three, affordable housing sales unit. Again, this is tied to people who have no more than 100% of area median income, and the price of a sales unit cannot be more than 30% of gross income. And to get to a affordable housing price, you kind of back into it, and then you call it on Jonathan, who has backed into it, because it assumes a certain level of mortgage, a certain interest arrangement. Then we provide on page three, affordable housing trust account, and that is a separate bank account. Area median income is determined by a HUD for Hudson Valley, which contains Ryanback. There is nothing smaller that we can use.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? There's nothing smaller than HUD?
Than in this area for the Hudson Valley, there's nothing tied directly to average income in Ryanback. Density bonus, that is limited to 15%. So that if lot size is in a 10-acre zone and a parcel is 100 acres, 15% would be 1.25 additional units, and we'd be rounded up to two. On bottom of page three, we have this concept of a designee, and presumably the town will hire a resident, which may be a non-for-profit, to help administer the program, to keep the list of people who want affordable housing, to check that they are using the housing as their primary residence, to recommend to Town Board sale prices for units following the criteria in the proposed law. On page four, developer is defined as someone who proposes 10 or more market rate sales units on a single or adjacent parcels. It would only apply to proposals for 10 or more units. Going to page five, this is what has to be done in each zoning district. And in all districts except Village Gateway and active senior housing floating districts and except for multifamily units, the developer can either build 10% of the units as affordable, that's in B, C, one, B, A, pay the town in lieu of the construct of affordable units on another location within the town, or reutilize a combination thereof of subsection D, the Oakwood Village Gateway and active senior housing floating districts. And there, there must be construction of 10% of the units, there's no payment of money. And on the top of page six, we have multifamily dwellings, which are limited by another provision of law to just six units, and that law mandates for the units must be affordable. So if it's five or less units, the developer can make one affordable for a fee. The D on page six deals with the amount of the fee, 25 cents a square foot, and then there are exceptions for new unit construction or conversion, and then those for area of less than 1,000 square feet, and for accessory buildings, garages, enclosed orchards, and other storage units, provided there's no living space in them. Density bonus is on page seven. And again, it can only apply to parcels that would allow 10, or at least 10 units. So a density bonus will only be on larger parcels where the extra density they can be able to use will not interfere with the thrust of the zoning laws, which is to preserve ocean space. The density bonus fee is $5 a square foot. And if a developer takes advantage of this, they would pay the $5 a square foot plus the 25 cents a square foot, so it would be 5.25. There will be, on page eight, an affordable housing trust fund account. It has to be a separate account. And in F, we authorize the transferring of the existing money into this new separate segregated bank account, which Warren says that we have to do. Going to page nine, the developer will have to have, in subsection three, the exteriors of affordable housing units shall be assembled to the fullest extent practicable, the construction and appearance of market rate units, interiors need not be the same, and accept that affordable sales units shall have at least the same number and size of bedrooms as the average number of size and bedrooms in similar market rate sales units. And then there's a provision for phasing that the affordable units and market units shall be constructed according to a schedule, so it's not loaded, or at the end, that will be the affordable units. In H on the bottom of nine, an application has to be submitted to the planning board. The planning board has to be told the number, type, and count of bedrooms, what the phasing plan will be, how the units can, when the units will be constructed, whether it's a density bonus or not. Subsection six, the planning board refers to plans for loss or review. Seven provides that the open space at affordable housing committee shall make a recommendation in writing within 30 days, but if they fail to do so, the planning board may take action without recommendation of the Open Space and Affordable Housing Committee. The site plan must contain, if it has affordable units, must contain a notation that there are affordable units, and the site plan must be filed with Dutchess County, and the platch will designate which units are the affordable units. There must be a declaration also filed by the developer. It has to be reviewed by the attorney for the planning board, and that declaration shall provide that the affordable sales units, and I'm just talking about a sales unit sent to a little department later, that the affordable sales unit must be used as a primary place of residence. A primary place of residence is defined as 184 days a year living there. The declaration would prohibit renting or subleasing of affordable units, but the town may waive by resolution for a temporary period of two years that prohibition for good cause shown, including temporary job transfer, medical care needs, or something else that the Town Board considers as a reason at reason for the two-year suspension. During that two-year suspension, the owner can charge rent. The rent cannot exceed what the carrying cost... The rent cannot exceed what the carrying costs are on the U-D-A. The affordable housing units declaration that is filed will remain affordable in perpetuity. And if the owner wishes to sell, this is F on page twelve. If the owner wishes to sell, the owner shall go to five town or the community that intends to sell, or even to refinance, and then request the price determination. The resale price is based on purchase price paid by the owner, increased or decreased from consumer price index plus depreciated capital improvements. And then G is the right to enforce the terms of this declaration, and it belongs to the town. And if the town has to institute recourse, and if the town wins, the town has the right to collect the damages and the unmeritable legal costs of the prevailing party. Shall we cover reasonable attorney's fees and costs? So you can go either way. If the town is wrong, the town should have to pay legal fees, the dependent, or honestly, dependent for pay. And then once this declaration is recorded with the Duchess County, the land office, the developer has to provide copies to the attorney for the planning board, the planning board clerk, and the deputy. I, on bottom of page twelve, go through the point system. Again, these points can be changed by the town board. And on page fourteen, you have a provision about multiple categories of royalties that should have the price. Page fourteen, we determine the calculation of the initial sale price. That gets thirty percent of housing cost and amounts more than thirty percent of average median income. Determining housing costs, we use in a thirty-year fixed mortgage with a five percent down payment. Again, these, at an interest rate of, I think, what? Four and a half percent, which can be changed by the town board from time to time. Okay, on page fifteen, talks about the sale of the unit. And the owner must designate, designate of the town that they would like to sell. The designated has one hundred eighty days to find buyer. The designated will get two percent of the sale price. And that's the figures of calculation of the sale price. And after that notice to the designated, the owner can then try to sell it at an affordable price. Or if they cannot, they could take it out of the affordable category by paying the then current payment in lieu of payment that is available. The D on, every D relating to the affordable units shall provide that the units are affordable in perpetuity. And the only exception is for a foreclosure event, which is defined by an institutional lender who has a current mortgage on the property. There is a default. That lender can foreclose, and the affordable provisions continue. And we were told that institutional lenders require that developers cannot give financing unless we have that. The rest of the proposed law from M on deals with the building. And again, for units less than six, because six is governed by existing law, the developer can either make another or get affordable or pay a fee of twenty-five cents. The exteriors of the rental apartments shall resemble to the fullest extent practical the appearance of the market rate apartments. And the bedrooms in the affordable rental units must be the same number and size as the average size of bedrooms for market rate units. Again, plans, when they go before the planning board will be referred to the open space and affordable housing committee, which has thirty days to specify the recommendations. And if nothing is heard from that committee, the planning board can head. The planning board will make a notation on the final subdivision, plating, site plan. There are affordable units as to what they are. Declaration, which are filed, which requires that less use the units as the primary place of residence. This is on page eighteen. Now in C, subleasing is prohibited unless there is a temporary waiver. This one is a one-year against subleasing. Subleasing can only be for good cause. The right to enforce these provisions is given to the town against the developer, the landlord, or both the town and landlord have the right to enforce the provisions against the, let's see, prevailing party. We cover his attorney's fees. And this declaration shall be recorded by the developer, and copies of the declaration given to local officials. The priorities set forth for the sale of units also applies to the renting of the unit, but the landlord can make a selection of the property. This is on page nineteen in O. The calculation of rent is on page twenty. And leases for one-year periods. And if gross income exceeds the permissible gross income, the tenant should move to a market rate unit in the same building or complex, but if there is no market, no unit available, then the person has to vacate. The developer owner in P on page twenty has to maintain the apartments, at least in the original delivery specifications. And there is a release of restrictions for foreclosure events. And if the owner of a rental housing unit wants to sell, they must sell it as an affordable rental building. There is no outline for the sale of an individual house. In S on page twenty-one, the successor shall consider the limited resale value in determining the appropriate assessment. U on page twenty-two deals with what the open space and affordable housing committee can do. And it also provides the town board may hire a staff or contract with Duchess County for qualifying non-for-profit organization or profit entity, government agency, to carry out duties with respect to the program. Violations of this law are subject to the violation provisions in Article X. And the effective date of the local law is immediate. However, at the end, there's a provision that says the construction of units, where the owner of the unit should be constructed after the effective date of this particular attempted to arrange and fire to the effective date of the local law. If the town subsidizes an affordable housing program, that person will only pay the fees provided in this law to the extent that it exceeds the amount of the provisions, the fees that would be engendered under this law. And this was written because the town received money from the developers of the gardens with the understanding of the fees where the money that was voluntarily contributed at that point should cover the construction of phase three of the gardens. I don't know if there's any questions.
The last time we had, maybe a year and a half ago, or two times, or it could have been shorter or longer. I thought that we were going away from this. I mean, I know that we have to do this for development in place, but didn't we come to the realization that there wasn't that much development out there that we could capture affordable housing from? Didn't we do a survey of the possibility of units?
The committee is also working on plan to create a state grant for a possible rental project. An appropriate site has to be identified, and then a grant would be applied for. The town, through the committee, has obtained the services from a consultant who has prepared and distributed to the board members a study of whether there is a need for a rental project in Reinbeck. And we have that in.
Yes, I wanted to hear from the chairs. You know, I'm sorry to, I can't remember what the amount, the total amount of units that we said could possibly ever, didn't we do a survey at one time?
Well, back is when the comp plan was done.
No, after. You did it several, I mean, as I said, it could have been two, three, five years. You got this time most quickly. But you guys did a survey of all the vacant land that was out there, and looked at the zones, and said there's only a total of X amount of units that really are, didn't?
Yeah, well, there was a question too about what the density bonus could actually mean. And I think that might be what you're thinking of. And really, there's a very limited number of properties.
Of units to capture.
That could be, boy, this could be applied.
Because the garden space theory is out of the running. They've boffed it out. We have their object theory. I'm just wondering, so we're looking at this as a part of a two-pronged, this and another approach in order to?
Yeah, the idea was to put a framework in place that could be sort of added on to over time in the context of putting a lot of them, then at least capture some of these if large developments will take place. And I have this kind of, we wanted to have a framework in place that were that to start taking place, this would sort of start to follow along.
And there's no subdivision fee in here?
There's not a subdivision fee.
Why not? Didn't we have one in the past?
We did have one in the past, but the, well, the idea of this is really that it relates to the actual construction of the units, and only to people who are doing it at a certain kind of scale. We originally had put in a framework that actually had a same fee associated with it.
But right now, we have subdivision fees, and they're only for recreation, not recreation and affordable housing?
Since recreation.
Just recreation, literally the fee in lieu of recreation.
The committee didn't want to apply this law to just subdivisions, because people subdivide and they're not going to build. So they wanted to put this law in on people who are going to build, because that would generate money.
But I understand, did we not consider subdivisions for a reason? Is it because they're already paying recreation fees?
It was partly because they're already paying recreation fee, and we also made the decision to focus on developments we need to structure.
And how did you come up with the price per square foot? Twenty-five cents per square foot seems awfully small.
Well, right now, the reality is that it costs more to build houses than it may be sold for. So, I mean, we didn't want to start moving them up because it's already something that's an add-on to sort of impossibility. What we wanted to do by doing it this way was to more create the framework. And if that number changes, then that number will go up.
It will change, it's plastic.
Yes, exactly. No, and the idea is that, you know, at some point in time, if it's a very different market, a different kind of demand rider, then, you know, that number could be ten bucks, it could be whatever.
I mean, you've done a ton of work. I can see it. It's very elegant, you know, it shows all the work. And I get that, that the numbers and the percentages change.
Yeah, it's, I mean, one of the challenges, just to sort of step back one second, is that, you know, we're trying to apply some of the same sort of thought processes that that, you know, we're trying to apply some of the same sort of thought processes that take place in areas of much higher development to an area of very low density development. And so a lot of these principles, you know, around mandated workforce housing units, you know, density bonus, cash contributions, payment, they typically come into place in the.
When there's hundreds of units.
When there's hundreds of units, yeah. So, and we spent a lot of time trying to match that with an area of much, you know, sort of lower, less developed buildings, but also much lower density.
Yeah, well, I wonder if this scale, like, does it scale down to what we have?
Yeah, and we would, you know, we tried to approximate it. Now, as Joe pointed out, the way that more development, more workforce housing development happens in towns like this have to do with state federal tax credits, or for projects that develop workforce housing would actually construct a rental project, which would be financed through, you know, potentially some participation by the town, which some of this could be used for in the future, whether the money that's being collected. But then also a combination, potentially of some state grant money, but also state tax credits and federal tax credits. And that's the more likely scenario.
So this is, this is in the end, I'll be on to a two-pronged.
Exactly.
Two-pronged.
Yeah, we wanted to create something that just, as I said, just put this framework in place, even though it's not going to be all that meaningful, give away developments taking place right now. But if, you know, if the combination of financing and a developer and corporate sector were to take place, that's the more likely scenario.
Do you think?
Yeah, I do, because your question just triggered something in my mind. So the issue of subdividing and just not applying to subdivisions, so we created a loophole here, if somebody were to do a twenty-lot subdivision without construction at that time of homes, and then sells the twenty lots to individuals, and then constructs single-family residences on each of those lots, those are, this law not captured?
Could they, or would they be required to make the payment at the point that each one of the units would be constructed?
But there's no subdivision.
If the individuals buy the unit, they own, they put up their own house, it's not a problem.
But if the same developer is developing all the houses, it sparks a little suspicious. I mean, other affordable housing plans do capture affordable housing fee for subdivisions. But there is a way of doing that, it's a little, it's complicated, you know, a little bit more complicated. I'm just wondering whether we should look at that.
Did I say, because you have people just provide property for lots of reasons other than development, or somebody didn't want to capture that, they wanted to capture it with it, as to whether, you know, if somebody's just selling lots, you know, it could take years before.
Right, the way you do it is.
More lots are sold, that was not something.
The way to do that, though, is you could, the affordable housing fee would come to play as whole, as a half, a lot of the development. So it would be, the owner would be passed on to the owner, and it would be included, you know, factored into the price. That's the way to do that.
Well, then owner or the person who owned the property before was subdivided?
Well, you have to figure out how you want to do that, but that's the way it would be done. It's very hard to assess affordable housing fee for undeveloped property, but you might , I just, I wondered if we could give a loophole here.
I have a question. The account that we're putting the money in, the fees into, is that simply, is that strictly to pay expenses for legal fees and the sales fees and so forth?
Or to develop, or to develop more house, more units?
It could be used for anything relating to.
But that's, that's to be determined.
Yes.
Theoretically, the way a lot of these affordable housing projects develop is through a partnership between the town and a non-for-profit, and that money could then be used to help fund an affordable housing project. And that's, so it would be not just a lawyer's.
I assume we could use it to subsidize rent?
No, I don't think so, no.
Rent, subsidize rent.
Yeah, somebody's, you know, turning an apartment into an affordable housing unit by paying part of the rent.
I don't think that was it.
No, that's not the case.
Okay, all right.
Then we're, then we're turning the town into sort of housing department, that seems beyond our pay grade, beyond our key, I mean, beyond what we, the function.
Not in the welfare.
We're.
When any use of the money would.
No, wouldn't, yeah, wouldn't be self-sustaining.
Any use of the money would have to be sure the town had.
Right. But it might be useful more to get a sense of what options are with respect to a subdivision that would take place, whether it's the then subdivided or.
Yeah, I, I think in the way that this law was originally drafted, I think it did apply to subdivisions.
Yes, it did, but as I say, the committee specifically decided not to apply it to subdivisions because of where the money was.
Well, we also, at that point, though, we were looking at doing this for, for anybody who was building a house, so it didn't have that ten unit or ten lot piece into it. If we're looking at, and in that case, that's where some of the concern came in, where somebody just is, you know, subdividing their lot to create a separate farm, you know, people could be doing.
That's like a, you know, two-lot division, something like there could be an exception.
Now that we're looking at ten, it feels different. So if we could get a sense of what, how that could work, then that's something that would be concerned.
Yeah, if you want to worry about.
No, I'm just, maybe it's something we want to consider. I'm assuming there'll be lots of questions that will be asked during the public hearing process, so instead of making changes now, we might want to just see what types of questions people have and others' suggestions, and then if we want to tweak the law. I don't see it as a terribly complicated thing to add something like that, if we wanted to do it to what we've done here.
Yeah, well, as I said, the original idea was that it was just for every house, and then would be every subdivision.
Right.
If it's ten or more, then.
Yeah, I'd say that's, you know, subdivision of twenty or more than maybe if they capture.
Yeah, it's whatever, whatever. But, you know, it's a different, it's a different mindset.
So what's our process then? Like, I think we should release this to the public, put it on our website, schedule a couple workshops?
Well, assuming we are in agreement that we want to go forward with the local law adoption, which I suggest that we do.
I think we've been working on it.
I just want to go back.
It's all this work, but, yeah.
I mean, the next step would be for me to just prepare a resolution introducing the local law. We can do that for our next town board meeting, setting it down for a public hearing. We would have to refer this to our planning board, to Vets' County Planning, probably the Constitution Advisory, and so, and then see what develops at the public hearing process, you know, I'm just suspect.
What about the secret process and everything?
Well, secret, I think we're okay with secret because we did a genetic environmental impact study conjunction with the original property hazard plan zoning law, which included an affordable housing provision, and affordable housing was considered as part of the secret process. So the only question in my mind that I, we're discussing, raised this with Joe, does this local law create additional potential significant environmental impacts that we didn't have in our original law? I'm not sure that it does, so I'm hoping that we can either pass a resolution indicating that, well, once you've, once we've done the generic, we might be able to just say we've looked at it and made a determination that there's no need for a, an additional environmental review. Or we can do a long-form environmental assessment form in conjunction, because it is a type-one action, I think, and then net-deck it with the resolution. But I don't see a lot of work being performed in conjunction with the secret.
No, I agree, but I think we have to address it.
Yes, we do, we always have to address.
Again, I'm sorry you missed it, I know, we changed the meeting time, it's okay, I apologize, I should have reminded you, but, you know, if you want to take time and go over it with, you know, Jonathan or Joe, have them take you through it, are you guys all in agreement that this is what you want to do, you want to stick to the schedule and have more, prepare a resolution, have at least, you know, a couple of public workshops to make sure that people have plenty of notice and can come in and think about this, but.
When's our best town board meeting?
It's.
Two weeks, at least?
Yeah, I'll have it for three. I'll check to see whether I can attend, maybe I can just get it all set up so you guys can, I mean, it's not, it's not going to be that complex and just go to pass the resolution.
It's on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, well, we just introduce it, so people, I don't think you're going to have anybody.
Set a public hearing.
Yeah, set a public hearing.
For the following meeting. I'd rather have a couple of public meetings and rush it, you know, which is better.
I think you'll find that you probably don't have more than one public hearing.
Well, I hope so. You know, I hope people want to come out and talk about this.
You know, complex and.
I don't see how much bar is to ten or more units, so that's.
Unless we want to, unless we want to change any of that.
Or the board decides to cut the number.
And it can actually be that meeting.
Oh, great, we'll do it first on the agenda. Any other questions, anybody, or comments?
No.
Thank you, committee, Chris and Jonathan and Joe. I know this has been a lot of work, a lot of research.
Wonderful task.
Yeah, it's the unit, so thank you all. We've got help to get this passed. Okay, thanks, Ian, sorry. Hi, we're back from our repressing or affordable housing presentation. Are there any committee or the assembly boards?
We're going to have to do a cancellation, but that's.
Did you weather cancellation?
Yeah, we, I can, once we talk about the building plan.
Zoning process.
Zoning process, I can never think of all three.
Right.
What was it, was it Ted Cruz, it could appear, the three.
Parry, I think.
It was right there.
The ones that.
We wanted to give a rush, but anyway. So we're making progress. We've, there is a new application form that was designed, which we're going to put in place shortly. And I'm trying to rationalize the various steps people go through for the permit process so we can track all of them in a uniform way. And I'm having some meetings this week to try to finalize that. That's, if you go at a high enough level, I think we can have a uniform process, you know, as long as you don't look mostly at the details. The other thing we're looking at is how to keep track of everything, and I'm currently talking to the municity people to find out if that's, if that software is capable of doing what we need now.
Thanks, yes.
And I'll make a judgment, but you have to know I'm fairly conservative when it comes to software. Being on the bleeding edge of the usage of software is not where I think we should be.
I'll second that, I agree with you on that. Yeah, well, thanks.
Yeah, so that's, so we're moving a little slower now.
Joe, you got anything?
No. Couple of things, I was with the Bard Center for Environmental Policy for two weeks in Mexico, it's the graduate students for environmental policy, and then I took a class Friday and Saturday with the Bard Sustainable MBA and the Center for Environmental Policy. And why do I mention this? Because there are all these great grad students at Bard who are dealing with sustainability issues, both in policy and within a business model, and going back to do some panel work with them and to see if they can't get involved with some of the things that we're dealing with, some issues that we may need help with, there's a whole brain trust right up the road, and the great model would be to, you know, make it a pod as a part of their, with a professor working with them. So, you know, whether it's looking at all the fields that we have and wanting to lower our label costs and amount of grass that we cut, naturalizing fields, or, you know, working on the trail project that Winnicke is working on, you know, Rhinebeck, Red Hook, Tidalee, could we all be connected biking and riding with our solar farm? There's just a lot, I see a lot of areas where we could work together, so I'm pushing on, and if anything, as it comes, I'll bring it back to you, but it was wonderful, and it was great to be back at Bard and be a part of that. The other thing is the assessors with all the weather and, I guess, all the illness going around, we've had to cancel our meeting, John Moleman from the State Assessor, Department of Property Tax, Real Property Taxation, to, he's going to help us write the RFP for our townwide revaluation reassessment, and that's with Jennifer Mott, and we, she's able to do it, and we're still looking to get that out of this grid for the public. During the course of an audit from the state and with the agreement of the assessors, we're finding that our valuations have slipped, and what we're finding is that there's a gross lack of parity in our assessment values. People with smaller homes have a heavier tax burden than people with larger homes and more than ten, and the state's saying we're going to lose our hundred percent evaluation unless we deal with this. So we want to see how much it will cost us to deal with this, and dealing with it means a townwide outside reevaluation and assessment of the big project. And the assessors are recommending that we do this.
Yeah, the, the, the fact that that got to me, that was not the hundred percent, whether we're a hundred percent or not, provided that there was a skew in assessments, that lower value houses are, lower assessed and higher value houses are under assessed.
We see that with our, we're at a hundred percent valuation here for, you know, for sales, and we're seeing that the houses in the village are selling for eight, nine hundred thousand and are assessed at five, we're seeing multimillion dollar estates under-valued by fifty percent, so it's something we have to look at. There's that, I think that's it, we had the tertiary, let her go up for Amtrap, I mentioned to you that Amtrap hadn't been paying their special district fees, and the county took it over, Amtrap only discovered it when they had to put a permit in for some work to comply with the ADA compliance. And what we've asked them to do as well as paying for their special, special district fees is to take over the maintenance of the steps, so that's a door that we're opening and we're trying to walk through and close it behind us, so let's see what happens with that. I don't think I have anything else. Anybody? Okay, I'll make a motion for Resolution 2017-045, Recreation Department hires for 2017 that's previously tabled. May I have a second?
Want to table again?
Well, here's the thing, in talking to Shelley, Shelley had no explanation for me why I would have all these stipends as well as salaries, so it's something I'd like to know.
Well, which way to break directly, come on.
Come on?
Yeah, no.
Okay, she's back, she's, you know, as a half a town, yeah.
So you got a strike to match with a thousand dollars.
There was no, this is a.
It's really two stipends.
There are stipends, there are three stipends we pay, I don't know why we pay the stipends, what, what the history of stipends is, should we be paying stipends? Just because we've always done it that way doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, so I, the two ties are all right.
What are we talking about? I mean, it's, there are two, one is five hundred dollars for the last one, one called medical aid, this, the guy we're talking about hiring is a qualifying EMT.
The first responder.
First responder, and the other one is the aquatics director, so he's managing all his life cards.
But why is there a stipend for that if there's a salary for that? That's my question.
It's a good question.
Okay. I'm fine hiring these two people for the hourly rates and, and getting more information about the stipends.
I'd be inclined to increase the hourly rate.
So you want to table, well, you just mentioned now that it's nothing, you just don't have the information?
Yeah.
You guys agree, does anybody want to do anything else? Okay, we're going to table that again.
We could, I mean, as you point out, the fifteen hundred dollar combined stipend is worth about.
It's a fifty percent bump. It's a 50% bump.
Yeah, well.
For seven weeks, 40 hours.
No, it's not seven weeks. The pool is open.
Oh, it's not just camp, it's the whole stuff.
The whole, so it's, it's from, from Labor Day to, or from Memorial Day to Labor Day, more or less. So it's, it's June, July, and August. So, you know, call 12 weeks and let's say 40 hours. So it's, you know, it's about $3 now.
I'll make a motion for Resolution 2017-050, our preliminary attempts to payable abstracts vouchers, 16 through 86, eight checks totaling 159,245.46 cents. May I have a motion? Discussion?
Just one of the items that we've already paid.
Is the electric essential, Hudson?
Yeah, the check, two different numbers on it. You know, owners of the bank took one of our state. Yeah, we're only talking about $20.
$20, I'll check with Shelley. Any further discussion?
Well, there was one bill that we, that we set aside. It's not on this list that I just want to talk for a second about, which is a bill from ACS because of the routers. What happened was, apparently the internet line, the cable got hit by lightning and took out the router, pardon me, when?
Month ago.
And right before the end of the year is when it happened. And so I'm going to call the insurance company.
Wasn't a surge?
No, we have surge protection.
How do you know it was lightning?
Because that's all it could be.
We had lightning with this past storm?
Well, yeah, I mean, trust me. The phone lines and the cable are the least protected part of the whole system. We've got surge.
So you want to talk to the insurance company?
I'm going to talk to the insurance company.
Okay, thank you.
So I just thought I'd tell you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2017-051, our accounts of payable abstracts vouchers, 110 to 120, 22 checks totaling $10,734.75. May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2017-052, our capital projects abstract, one check for $110.36. May I have a second? This is for, I think, our speedies permit at the Thompson-Mazarello Park. We need to check and see if this speedies permit is closed out. If it was only for the work that we did, it applies to the pavilions that we could close out the permit and not pay for it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2017-053, town hall use application. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Motion, second, and second, thanks. Center clause letter swatted in May. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2017-054, appointing a municipal accountant, Patterson-Kowski. May I have a second? Alan and I met with my Lucci partner and Lisa, can't remember her name.
Lisa Gill.
Lisa Gill, oh, good. Last week. And he's an accountant that he can turn to from time to time for issues that we're not able to answer. So highly recommended and we're hoping.
Have we called any of these towns?
Yeah.
Yeah, good references.
Yeah, good references.
And the accountant we use is Lisa Gill. She's at the manager level.
We have some good contacts, easy contacts with the office of state. Controller and see how it goes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2017-055, make a motion to repair the communications cable in town hall. May I have a second?
Second.
We're having phone issues downstairs in the assessor's office and the.
I suspect this is the same thing.
You think it is?
It could very well be.
It's an inter-wiring issue. We never replaced the wiring, so this is to rewire it.
When did it go bad? Around, I think it was around the end of the year?
Don't know. A couple of weeks, could be, but I.
Like I said, the telephone wires and the cable wires are notorious and susceptible to ringing, lightning.
Put this on your list for talking in terms of, you know. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I think that's it. Is there any new business? Or any public comment on any non-agenda or other items? If there's no illness, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, and bye.